We are fortunate to have Superintendent Johnson with us tonight and she's our fantastic student superintendent who's an expert in student achievement and we're going to turn the time over to her.
Well, it's so great to be with you this evening and I'd like to formally and in the presence of all you thank our Board of Education for the wonderful support that they give us with increasing student achievement. They give us direction and then follow that up with increase in any kind of funding that that might mean for us and we appreciate that so, so very much because that's the important work that we do within Jordan School District. So when we thought about the title for tonight, Innovations for Increased Student Achievement, I thought, well, you know, we better just go and we better define what is innovation? What does that mean? And as you look that up and, you know, explore it yourself, it's a new method or a new way of doing something. And so we're going to talk primarily about three different innovations that we're looking at within the Jordan School District President. One of them is a new method of teaching. Okay? Oftentimes you go in the classroom and you are looking at the teaching model, but you'll find that this innovation that we're going to talk about this evening switches the focus from teaching to a focus on learning. Also, we're going to talk about a new method of structuring. That means a different way of structuring our school day to try and maximize those things that we can do within the learning realm. And also, a new method of delivering different content and that has to do with our career in technical education. So first of all, I will introduce, this is Terri Timpson. She is our Administrator of Schools over the West Jordan feeder system and deeply involved in the great work that we're doing with the University of Virginia and our turnaround initiative.
Thank you. Again, my name is Terri Timpson and I am Administrator of Schools. I work with the schools in the West Jordan feeder system and it is really a pleasure to be here with you this evening and share with you with information about something that I'm very invested in and very passionate about. And that is the turnaround initiative that we're involved with because it makes a difference for young people and for teachers and for administrators. And we're beginning, are ready to see some great outcomes from the work that we're doing. So I'd like to share with you some of the things that are involved with the turnaround initiative. We really look at high leverage leadership. What are the key actions that we can look at at a school that will impact most carefully the actions of teachers and students? Again, what are those high leverage actions that we can look at? How do you look at learning in the building? How do we have evidence of learning in the building? What types of leadership do we need to look at in a school to really help develop this vision and purpose and move teachers and students forward? What are the key actions, the key levers that we can pull, so to speak, really implement that will bring, that are supported by research that will make a difference for young people because that's what we're about, is this intense focus on student learning. And so as we go through our work, looking very carefully at the school culture that is developed, that creates the message that every minute matters in our school. One thing that you would notice if you visit a turnaround school is by the time the second bell rings in the morning, students are in their classrooms and they're working. We don't have a minute to lose. It's not that we don't have fun, but we're very focused on re-caching as much instruction as time as we possibly can and creating a culture where we're in partnership with young people and with teachers. And we all speak this culture, this conversation, this culture of conversation where we say student learning is our most important focus and all the work we do leads to that. It's a focus on, again, not just teaching, but the learning piece. As I then turn around schools and talk with the students, I- Certainly, what we're, it's great evidence when they can speak to the learning and not only speak to the learning, but share with you, this is where I'm successful and here's another place where I'm working and here's the support that's available for me and here's how my teacher understands that. And then the administrative, as I work with principals very closely each week, this is the evidence that they share with me that tells me that they also understand, down to the student level, the learning that's taking place in the building. Again, I love this quote, when we say effective instruction is not about whether we taught it. We can stand and teach, but it's about the evidence that we have that students have learned it. And that is the accountability piece as I'm working very closely with these schools and monitoring this initiative. It's not a program that we put in place, but it's really best practice. It's changing the way we look at student learning in the building. And I have the opportunity to spend half a day at each one of these schools each week and we look carefully at evidence. We're in classrooms, I'm working closely with teachers, again, talking to students, talking about things that are effective in the building. And again, all leading back to the, to the learning piece. One thing that's very critical is where we have created a culture that's very focused on data and it's focused on using data in a way that's going to move learning forward. So we have these four critical keys that we look at as we look at data-driven instruction in our buildings. And we're getting better at this. And again, this is a shift in how we really look at, number one, the assessments that we give young people. But number two, how quickly do we, do we look at that evidence and then what do we do with it? And how, do we have a culture or a system that will support that as well?
No, you're okay.
Okay, good. So let's talk about each one of these keys because we really define assessment as being that roadmap, roadmap for rigor. So we look carefully at the assessments that have been developed. We want to use the right tools. We don't want to just assess for assessment's sake, but make sure that they're aligned very carefully to standards and to, um, all that we're involved in, that we're very transparent with our assessments, that we use them to make sure that we are teaching to the level of rigor where students will be assessed. Again, sometimes that's some of the challenge is we, we're teaching and students are learning, but we may not be teaching at the rigor that they will be assessed. We want to do everything we can to help students feel successful on those assessments. It becomes very important that they're readily available to teachers, that they're prepared, that they know clearly standards and this roadmap that, that we've developed for instruction for that assessment period. We look carefully at the analysis. Our goal, and again, we're getting better at this, that we have that data available for teachers very quickly. And again, through support of our board, this, this year, we've been able to implement a district-wide reporting system that we use that, that scores those assessments very quickly and helps us analyze the data very quickly because after the assessment, we want to get right in there and look at the analysis and look at it very deeply. It's not more, it's more than just a percentage of how students are doing, but look at each question, look at each standard and say, here's where we're doing well, here's a place where most of our students need support and here's the plan that we're going to develop to make sure we address that question.
Is there a way that the parents can see that as well quickly? I feel like all the testing our children get take us so long to see it that I don't know how to help my own child. So I love that the teachers can get to it, but can we as well get to these assessments and analysis and all of this so we can also work with the teacher?
I love that question because you're such an important stakeholder in the work that we do. I think eventually we're looking, it's a web-based program and I know that they're looking at a component, I'm not sure when that will be implemented, but I will tell you this, as you go and speak to the teachers, they will be able to, to get that information for you very quickly. Or if you send to them an email, they could send that to you very quickly because it's very accessible to them. Also, talk to your students because if we're doing a good job, they should be able to say to you, this is where I did well, this is where I'm going to work, here's a plan that I have for learning as well. I love your question though because we know, I mean, parents are one of our key stakeholders and we tried through this initiative to really communicate well with our parents and say, we need you as a partner. When I talked about student culture a little while ago, we need parents as partners that will help us get students to school on time, that will help us get students in the classroom every day, that will make sure that we're all ready to learn together. In, in fact, all three of our turnaround schools, there is data posted right there in the front hall, sometimes it's outside of the school on the front sidewalk, that says, here's how we're doing, here's how many absences we had, here's how many tardies we've had, this is how much growth we've seen. Because we're working with parents to say, let's work together so that we can help support learning of the young people. So your question is right on, it's creating that partnership. And again, that communication piece is always available to you to get that information. We want our teachers to get right into that analysis and without, within, our goal is going to be 48 hours. Again, we're starting to make progress, but we're, we, and we, we help the teachers with analysis because we're going to provide them with some time and support to make sure that this happens so that it fits within the work that they do. But we look very carefully at the data to say, what do we know about student learning in the classroom? And where, what will be our plan and actually create a plan and say, here's the group of students, you know, um, Terri Timpson, she did really well here, but this one standard, I can see she's struggling and so are six of her friends. So I'm going to pull together that small group and help reteach that at this time of day. And here's the evidence that I will have that says, we've done some re-teaching and here's how we know the growth that's happened with those young people. So it becomes very, very careful work, deep work that we're requiring of teachers as they own this data as well.
Are we looking at only elementary schools here?
Right now, we have three turnaround schools which-
That are all elementary?
Yes. The goal is that again, we take our learning, this is our first year in the partnership, but again, working with our other administrators eventually and bringing practices to them that we know have made a difference.
I just, it sounded like elementary.
Yeah. Yeah, there are three elementary schools that are in the West Jordan feeder system right now. Great question. So we worked through the, the analysis, we moved to action. We know very clearly the students and again, it's down to the student level, the plan that we will have in place for them. And there's a lot of accountability. There's accountability with the administrators by myself because I'm there and we're talking about that. There's accountability for the teachers, that they understand the learning that's taking place in their classrooms. Accountability with students, that they understand their learning as well, that we're all fully invested in this process of learning in our school. Finally, the culture for a data-driven culture is critical, that we provide professional development to support teachers. I, I, it's critical that we bring them the tools that they need to do this good work and that we bring professional development to support our administrators, that they have the tools to do this work because it is a shift in mindset that, you know, not only are we going to say we've taught it, but we can say, this is how we know the learning that has taken place. Sometimes we build by borrowing. We've done a lot of work together in this initiative by saying, what has worked well in other schools? Schools that are similar to ours, schools that are different than, than ours, but what practices have made a difference for young people? Because we see really good work that happens across the country and we want to say, that can happen and work with our young people as well. And it's exciting. It's great work that we do as we learn to support each other in this. So just a few things about systems and support because we've had to look in this initiative, not only at the school level, but also the district level. Do we have systems in place that will support the work that we're asking our administrators and our teachers and our students to be involved in? Do we have, we created a growth mindset where we say, okay, this is what we know about learners and we know that with the right type of support and in particular, specific feedback to these young people and specific feedback to teachers and to administrators, that we're all going to get better at what we do. We're going to become better leaders, we're going to become better teachers and we have some great teachers, but we can become more skilled at our profession and we're going to create stronger learners. And all of that comes together with this mindset that, you know, we're going to work very hard at this effort and they are working hard and I want you to know how much I appreciate that. And it's very evident because we're seeing a, a difference in young people. Creating winning streaks for some of these young people that haven't felt successful before in a school environment becomes so critical as they move forward. Really understanding that we have a belief that all students can learn, all students can learn and we can provide evidence to show that that is happening. And we've had to work really carefully to say, we believe that all students can learn and I know that the teachers feel that way. And I think the young people are starting to have confidence in themselves as learners as well because of the structure that we have in place. We have some dedicated administrators. We've worked hard to provide tools for teachers in this initiative where we provided additional preparation time for them. Again, you can see that we're asking a lot of them. We're asking them to drill down at a deeper level than we've ever asked before and we want them to be able to do the work that we're asking them to do. And so we have certified people that take classes for, for different kinds of specialties in these schools. So teachers have collaborative time where they meet together, they plan together. They also meet in their weekly professional learning community meetings, we call those PLCs, that's kind of the language that you hear, and bring data with them to talk about that. But again, we want to make sure that we have the right tools in place. We don't want to ask and then have barriers in place that make it frustrating to do this work. I've talked with you a little bit about my role. I, I work with the schools in West Jordan and it's a delight to work with all of the schools. And I have an intense focus with the three turnaround schools as well, that we, I am there every week, we, we do good work together. We go, this is the structure, we go out and observe in classrooms first. I want to go out and see teaching and learning. I want to talk about young people. And then we come back and look at evidence and we visit the, their PLC meetings and we visit their teacher meetings and we, we look at the data from their data dives and, and observe those as well. And then we problem solve with the administrators because we're asking a lot of them as well. And it's good work that we do together. We keep very careful record of the work that we do. And the last piece is again, is the professional development. Again, not just for teachers, but for administrators as well because it becomes critical to, to the work that we do together. So this is really one of the big keys that makes this a little different than maybe some of the other work is this very intense focus on systems, support and the data-driven instruction. Holding, I like this quote by a leading educator who's done a lot of this strong turnaround work, again, and have, they've taken schools that were low performing schools for many, many years and created an environment and a focus on data, a culture and a focus on data that has changed the lives of young people and changed the lives of teachers as well and helps to create that understanding that all of us can learn and grow. So we again, say, what really makes education work is when we leverage the leadership. We look at what are the high impact actions that we can implement in this school and we make sure that great teaching is happening so that we can ensure that great learning is taking place. And it's that collaborative work that we do together with this turnaround initiative. You will begin, continue to hear about the achievement that's happening at these schools because we're seeing gains in student achievement that we haven't seen for a few years in them, in these schools and it's exciting work, but we're just getting started. And this is our first year in the partnership and we'll continue our work with the University of Virginia for another year and then we go on a monitoring status. But again, the goal is not just to keep the learning here, but also then to share that with others as well so that we can build capacity in all the work that we do. Jolynn?
Any more questions? Awesome, of course. So this is, basically it sounds like it's not a new solution, like the teachers should have been doing this all along, doing pre and post-test, gathering evidence, re-teaching students, right? So this is making it, giving it a high tech component to give faster feedback to the teachers, is that what I'm understanding?
That's a piece and a much more intense focus. Much quicker analysis, much deeper analysis than what we've done in the past. Typically, we look at the data and, you know, and we look at kids certainly, but this is drilling down to a level that we have not drilled down to before, where we're really pulling apart standards, assessments, really looking at students and creating action plans specific to students that will make a difference with their learning. So it's really good practice, you're right, but it's really going to a deeper level than we've gone in the past. And asking a lot of our teachers and asking a lot of our administrators and we certainly appreciate their good work.
And so for like, for Utah Compose, you've just been working with that, which I really like that, there's a lot of positives to that tool. One thing that we've started discovering lately as parents and teachers have been talking is these kids can't seem to get over 25. We even have a teacher like try to write it just to see what would happen. Anyone who gave her a score of writing number 25, we're like, well, then how is this assessment correct? And so are there kind of buffers and humans put in the way to make sure that those computer adaptives don't mislead or misinform or, do you know what I mean?
Yeah. And it goes back to really good thought about the assessment piece in particular and we look carefully at those assessment questions. We're looking more at the interim assessments. It's like, it's like when your child is sick, you wouldn't want to wait until the end of the year to take them to the doctor and say, well, what do you think's wrong with them? They've been struggling for a while now, you know? So really, we're looking at, and this again, is a new piece as well, clearly those interim assessments going very deeply so we can make those course corrections. Some of the work that we do is looking at the assessment itself. This year, we're piloting a literacy benchmark assessment in our schools. And so that's a process and, and we're providing a lot of really good feedback because we want to get to the point where we're, we, we feel very confident about those assessment questions and again, that they're, they're assessing for the level of rigor that then we're going to see on that end of level computer adaptive piece so that our students are prepared for that type of a work. So yeah, I'm glad you asked that question because we're really looking at those ongoing pieces, not just waiting until the end of the year for that. Yeah. And the component that you're talking about as well is, I like Utah Compose because they do get feedback, but we want to provide that teacher feedback specifically to students so that it's very clear the learning path that will happen in that, in that building. So you're right, I, you know, again, and, and that's something that we know what good practice is, but it's really taking this to a much deeper level than we've looked at it before. Yes.
What about the feedback of the teachers and the administrators? Are they overwhelmed by this?
I will tell you at the beginning, it was a little overwhelming. We met with the staff actually last March and, and talked about this process and shared with them so that they would be, feel like it was a really good fit for them. That was an important part of this process. It's going to them and saying, we're going to enter into this partnership and here's what's required. It's really actually fun to watch because it has been hard work. It's been hard, hard work and a lot of accountability, I mean, from me on down. But, but once we got to about December and that we started to see very strong evidence about changes in learning in the building, that flywheel piece starts to turn and the momentum starts to happen. And I, I, in fact, we just did a staff culture survey with all of the teachers because I thought it's really important to gather their voice right now. So we did that in a way where they could talk to us anonymously if they wanted to and share with us any concerns. And I can't tell you how overwhelmingly positive their responses were. They had good questions and we listened to that and we make adjustments about some of our requirements for them because they have, they're, again, I've just touched briefly on the instructional requirements that we have for them. But I would say overwhelmingly, it's been a very positive, positive response by the teachers. And it's because they see young people being very successful in a way that we haven't necessarily seen before.
Is it taking more planning time outside of the school? Like I see that you're giving them planning time, but are they feeling like, I'm taking this and now it's even additional on top of that? Or do they feel like they're getting what they need to be able to plan?
I think that might depend on the teacher that you talk to. I think for the most part, they really appreciate that additional preparation time and that's been something they've shared very clearly with us. Teachers can always use more time, I will tell you that. Doesn't matter what school you're teaching in. They carry home heavy bags with them many nights and sit and grade papers and do things like that and plan. But I do feel like the teachers are planning more collaboratively because they have some common planning time. Not only do they have planning time, but most often is common. So with other teachers in their grade level, so they have that opportunity to do a lot of that good planning so that then when we have our professional learning community meetings, they could really focus on the data piece. Yes.
How are the teachers getting that additional time?
Because we've scheduled that during the school day where their students are, go somewhere else for a specialty class and then they have that planning time built into their day, which typically hasn't happened at the elementary level.
And are those specialty classes, like what, what type of classes were those?
Technology, art, music, PE. So very relevant classes, part of the curriculum. It's not just fun and fluff, you know? And I will say, they work very hard to integrate some of the things they're doing in specialty class with other content areas that we're studying, so that becomes important. Other questions that I can answer for you? You're all welcome to come and visit if you'd like. I think you'd be pleased. It's Majestic Elementary, Heartland Elementary and Westvale Elementary. So thank you for your questions, appreciate that.
Is Westville, is that, is that an ALPS?
No, Westland is the ALPS school. Yeah. They're all Title I schools. Again-
And this is a grant through the university?
We're using our Title I funds to help support that.
But it's their program?
Well, yeah, they, they do the leadership development and then they monitor how we're implementing practices in our district.
Is the technology side something that will be able to be implemented in the other schools that are not Title I, like, or is it going to be cost ineffective to?
All of our schools have access to that, that record-keeping program.
And once we have it, everybody can-
Yeah, everyone in the district right now has access to that.
And have any teachers outside of those schools shown interest in using it?
Yeah, all of our schools are using it. It's called Mastery Connect and we're using that to help assess and do different things.
So all of our teachers right now, I could email them and say, where is my kid and they would know? On, on that?
With some assessment, with assessments, yeah.
This program that you're talking is just elementary, but that Mastery Connect is high school, middle school and elementary. Everybody has access to it, correct?
This is our first year of implementation, so different schools are at different levels with that.
And teachers aren't completely familiar with it maybe?
Well, they're getting training on that, so just, you know, be aware of that.
So the fact that if I emailed my teacher today, they may not know. They may not understand.
It would depend on their level of implementation.
My taking, a day or two to get it together.
No, I, I totally understand. I don't expect it, I was just, I just didn't know.
Yeah. Just wanted you to know where we are with the implementation. It's been very helpful and provides us really good data pretty quickly. Yeah. Okay.
How is the data reported? Is it benchmarking, is it percentile?
It's by standard and reported by levels of mastery on that standard. And you can look at it and sort it several ways and you can look at individual question, test questions and click on that and it will show you the students that answered each, the question by each answer, those that have it correct, that those who don't. You look for patterns with that. Yeah. So there are a lot of different reports that you can run by teacher, by student, by grade level, school grade levels, yes.
The reason I like that, from a parent and every teacher's, teacher's perspective is I had my daughter run something dry and spell which is a common standard drill website and she had learned something, but then when I was in a different format, presentation to her, she's like, I don't know what that is. So I explained it to her, I said, it's this that she knew in her language and she knew it. She's like, oh, I can do that.
Sure.
But because the presentation was different, she didn't think she knew it, but in fact she did. So that way, you know, she may know how to do a standard, but she may not know all the different ways or the language that's incorporated around that standard. You can identify where the language gap is and fix that.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. All right. Thanks so much.
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to. Dr. Gottfried will share the next part of our presentation. He's going to share information on the modified extended day pilot that we're considering in our district and we'll let him get started.
I do promise you that we're looking for a catchier name. We'll, we'll try to come up with something a little less clunky, but that's right. So I appreciate the chance to talk with you tonight. One of the innovations that we're always looking at is related to housing students and very closely related to that is educating students. And we have some options that we think go hand in hand to improve both of those things. But that's within a context, we always look around this time of year at each school's enrollment and their projected enrollment and where things are and whether there are adjustments to the calendar that are going to be necessary. Not how long spring break is or the Christmas break, but whether we're on a year-round or traditional calendar, maybe if there are boundary adjustments that are needed for housing students. And as a part of that, we are going to be piloting the modified extended day, but I'll get to that in a moment. There are really three changes to school calendars and two of them are, well, the first one is one that we look at every year, year-round to traditional. And we have some schools that are making that long-term change. And then we have year-round to traditional on a short term that we're considering and we'll talk a little bit about that. And that's more out of the ordinary and modified extended day is something that we've not done before. So I'm going to go through and try to give an overview. There are a lot of details that could be shared, but I will go, give you an overview and I encourage any questions along the way or afterward. So we have five schools- There are a lot of details that could be shared, but I will give you an overview and I encourage any questions along the way or afterward. So we have five schools with a change in calendar for next school year. Columbia, Hayden Peak, Mountain Shadows, Oker, and Riverton Elementary are all on year-round and will be traditional next year. We've met with the school, we're talking with employees to help everyone through the transition and we have that information sent out. In addition, we have two schools that are under consideration for a shorter term potentially move to traditional. We know that based on enrollment patterns, they could support a traditional calendar for at least two years. And so we have surveyed students, presented to the board, and we anticipate a final decision being made in the next board meeting regarding whether that will be put in place on a short-term basis. So that, those are the changes we've made from a year-round to traditional or are considering as a district. The modified extended day has been researched with some meetings that we've held as an administration with members and former members of cabinet in Alpine. This is a model that they have honed over the last several decades and it's implemented in the vast majority of their elementary schools. So I'll give you a little bit of an overview of what that looks like. There are two tracks of students created for each class. So, for example, a fourth grade class would be made up of some early birds and some later gators. So, the later gators and early birds start 75 minutes earlier if you're an early bird, 75 minutes later if you're a later gator. So the teacher has a longer teaching day and you have a set of students that arrive 75 minutes before the next group. And then you have a group that stays 75 minutes after the other group. So there's a time, a five-hour period of time in between where they overlap. And that allows for smaller groups in the beginning and the end of the day to work on literacy or math, whatever the focus is. In Alpine, it's generally been literacy. That also does some other things that we'll talk about later, such as alleviate drop-off. It immediately cuts drop-off in half because you have half as many students coming. So, as far as, as, so that's, that's, that's the effect on students and parents is that you have really a two-track system. Group of students coming early, group of students coming later. You have teachers with a larger class size in the middle of the day where those two groups are overlapping. And I've, I've put together a perfectly balanced example. Now, we know that every class isn't always perfectly balanced. I emphasize the perfectly balanced because that's the ideal, but we know that there are variations. So, you would have 17 students from eight to nine fifteen, getting that time with the teacher in a much smaller group. Thirty-four students from nine fifteen to two fifteen, that includes any recess, lunch, field trips, and other instruction. Then you have 17 students from two fifteen to three thirty. So this is what the modified extended day looks like. We have some handouts that we'll pass out. This is a large screen, but not that large. So, we'll pass this out. It's just kind of a, it's a graphic representation of what that, what that would look like day to day and what that instruction looks like. Continuing the description for what this would look like for teachers, part of the model is that there are specialist teachers provided for 30 minutes a day, in the same way that we described for the turnaround schools where you have art, PE, technology, instruction from specialized teachers. That allows for prep time for teachers during that, during that time of the day. Teachers in Alpine, this is not, we're working on developing the model for Jordan District. Teachers are paid an additional 13.89% for teaching a longer day. I'm sorry, that's not more precise. That's rounded. 13.89. Okay, so fewer teachers are required for the same size enrollment as a result because instead of one teacher having 22 or three or five or seven or eight students in the class, they may have 35. And so they may have slightly more than that in the upper grades. So if each teacher has between 30 and 38 students, that will lower the number of teachers that you need in a building overall.
Can I, is there a cap at 38? Like, so, I have a sister-in-law in Alpine and she said there's where they've got almost 45 in their class in the middle of the day.
Forty-five would seem an unreasonable number to me.
She felt that same way.
I don't want to ever have to tell someone that there are 40 even in an elementary class.
So would we cap it? I mean, like, would there be a cap that way?
It's an excellent question. And there, what would the cap be in the middle? But also, what would the cap be for the early birds and later gators so that you have that balanced? Right now, we require tracks to be balanced within five students so that you don't have A track with 40 students and B track with 12. But you do find an imbalance because as people move out, sometimes it's not as balanced as you expect it to be. That's why I said perfectly balanced on the example. So that's an excellent question and that's one of the things that we'll need to look at. How much flexibility do schools have and, and where are the caps to, for that class size? The biggest concern is how big that middle section becomes. I think that's something we really need to look at. And for me, it's also how well we've balanced the early birds and later gators to be sure we're getting the full benefit of the schedule. So from an administrative and staff perspective, principals and assistant principals, and again, this is the Alpine model, are, are paid 4% for the extended day. School administration is responsible for assigning early birds and later gators. Two breakfasts would need to be served. That's just one of the things that they need to manage at the school. Hobbits are big fans of this plan with the two breakfasts, sorry. I'm a geek, I have to make that. And then classified staff pay is not increased in amount of traditional classified pay schedule. So, transportation comes into play. Even though there's a great benefit for the drop-off and pickup when you have half as many parents coming to that limited area at a given time, you also have to provide busing twice as many times during the day. Now, those are routes where you're picking up fewer kids and we believe there are ways that we can make those routes efficient and really make the model work. But Alpine has infused some additional funding into the transportation end of things to make it work. That would mean, if, if, if this moves forward, that would mean that we have three different elementary calendars. Traditional and modified extended day and then year-round. Funding and staffing ratios need to be modified, so we just need to look at the, the nuts and bolts of how that, how that works. So some of the considerations, and I'll, I'll go through these relatively quickly. But like I said, any questions along the way, please raise your hand. We would have higher class size, of course, in the middle of the day, lower class size during the early and late portions of the day, which really allows you a unique kind of access to teachers. We are never going to be able to afford to get class sizes down to the level where research has shown it makes an impact. The greatest impact comes when you get classes down to a very low size. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be trying to manage it and lower it the best that we can because it does have a big impact on teacher morale and their effectiveness and how much individualized instruction they can give. But the big statistical impacts come when you dramatically decrease that. What this really does essentially is it raises class sizes as it lowers class sizes. And so it does both. And you, if, with proper training, then you're able to leverage that to provide individualized instruction during those smaller class-sized portions of the day. It provides an opportunity for small group instruction and interventions. If the teach, if, if you have teachers there and you have busing happening on early and late schedules, it would be conceivable that students could extend their day on certain days of the week and say, be an early, be a later gator who comes with the early birds to participate in choir or some other sort of extension activity or specific interventions for those who are struggling. So there are some options that the schedule opens up.
Then would the choir, though, have to be held two different times? Would they have two separate choirs? Or would you have to say, if you want to participate in this choir, you have to be a later gator?
Something we haven't decided for ourselves, but what Alpine does is they say, if you're a late, you want to be a later gator if you, if you wish to participate in choir. So they-
So all of those, like, if you want to be in orchestra, if you want to be all of those, you would, that would, that would be impacting?
Sorry, I don't understand your question.
So, so not just choir, but if you're going to do orchestra, you have to be a later gator? You have to, you know, if they want to have a math club, they want to, you know, any of that?
Well, not necessarily. It's just the way that we, that Alpine has done that is to, is to have those as an early bird or a later gator sort of thing. But you can also have it after everyone is done. The, the before and after-school programs are actually relatively rare at the elementary level, but this, this may increase that for those who are interested in those particular programs. We haven't fully explored the best way to do that, but those are some of the alternatives. Depending on how the busing looks, you might even be able to provide busing on certain days for the, some of those activities in schools that maybe cover a smaller geographic area. We have some schools that are being considered for this, one school in particular that doesn't really have busing. And so you could be more flexible on that. So, it's a great question and it's something we'll be looking at.
Would you be considering the option to let teachers level kids? So, for example, if I'm having, you know, two third-grade classes, would you let the teachers have a conversation because, you know, siblings are going to want to be together? So all families are either going to have to be early birds or later gators. They're not going to be happy about being split.
Sure.
So I get this class from a kid and some of these kids are high, some of them are low. I used to teach in a model like this. And we had the ability as teachers to level our groups. And what we liked about that was that then my morning, if I had all my lower kids in the morning, I could do some serious intervention with those kids. And then, and my later gators, I could do accelerated learning for them. But with siblings wanting to be together in such a large system, if you had teachers where I said, okay, I'm going to take all the, all the low kids in my class in the morning and you're going to take all the low kids in the afternoon that I can't because of sibling structure. So would there be some freedom to, we don't like to level, it seems a lot, like in this district. However, when we're talking about intervention, it works. You know, it's a good use of time. Would you be open to considering that kind of model?
Certainly. I think we're, we're exploring everything. Now, ability grouping is effective under certain circumstances. One of those circumstances is when students can move fluidly from one group to the other based on improvement that they've made. So that if they're set for the year in a particular ability group, that tends to limit their progress. And so I'm not sure that setting them up for a particular ability group for the year would be something that we would necessarily, but, but, but what I'm saying is we're-
You're going to have a kid who's like three levels below in reading, be my accelerated university-level reader by the end of the year, I mean, you live in the real world, right? So if I, I'll have levels within that group, but not like, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not, I'm not going to stop them from progressing as a teacher, you know?
Right.
But I'm saying, if I know I have kids with needs and I can work them within those levels and work harder with them when I have that small class size, because that's going to make a huge difference, that class size as a teacher. You tell me 35 kids, that's about it for me. You tell me any more than that, forget it, I'm done teaching, you know?
Right. Sure. So, I, I want to be clear, part of what I said was that nothing, nothing, we're looking at all of the ideas and we would certainly consider that. But I think you might have more flexibility doing some interventions during the time, an additional intervention. If someone like you're talking about is on a third-grade reading level when they should be on a sixth-grade reading level, they're probably going to need something beyond just that 75 minutes. We're going to ask them to be an early bird and a later gator with some very targeted additional resources that we're bringing to that. So, we're going to explore all of the options. We're going to look at what's best and that's, you bring up an excellent point. Part of what we need to do is leverage this time in the best way possible. Make the best use of this time. Because if you don't structure it, and even very good teachers are not going to be able to make the, the, the best use of the time because it's so dramatically different. Very much like when the high schools moved to a 90-minute class schedule, when you've been teaching 50 minutes your whole career and suddenly you're doing 90, you may end up just doing 50 minutes and then not being sure what to do unless you've really thought that through and had an opportunity for professional development. So that's part of what Alpine talked with us about as well is make sure that you structure professional development to help support teachers so that you're making the most of the time. And considering how students are, are served and how those who are very advanced or who are struggling or those middle learners are, how their needs are met is going to be really central to making this successful. So I think you raise a great point.
What are the advantages you have of instrumenting in sort of the next 18 or 19 months? Could students be able to take sightseeing down to these other schools or run this and ask the questions, just exactly as you outlined there? And what are you doing with these kids that are three, four levels below the grade level? How are you structured? What have you seen this work for? Do you have an advantage? They've learned from 30 years of experience down there to kind of implement this and hopefully give off the ground right off the get-go and tweak it to our personal need and adapt it for our local needs and wants?
And, and the question you ask is really central to what we try to do as educators because there is not an easy answer to how do you, how do you account for this great disparity in ability? If you put me and Michael Jordan in a basketball class together, I will be totally lost and he will not benefit from what's going on. So, I need help and if Michael Jordan's going to get better, it's not going to be when he's around me. But, you know, but, but we have to think about that, like you said, we have to think about it realistically in the real world, not in theory. And that's why, like, like Mr. Anderson said, they've been innovating on this for a long time and we'll get to look at how they do it. My impression is they do that based on parent choice and then they work within those smaller groups. But we have a chance to do things the way we want to do it, so.
Well, I know some of our schools do a thing called Power Hour where they have that focused instructional time and bring aides in and so on. So it'd be kind of like having Power Hour at the beginning and the end of the day.
Right.
And, and if you get aides in there too, to take 17 students and then break them down into small groups, you could have some, you know, significant benefit.
Absolutely.
And you could, you know, give different students what they need at that, on their level.
And I, I think that's a great point because under the current system where you just have 26 kids all day long, and you don't have the same level of flexibility to address the exact needs that you're talking about. So, there are lots of different ways to bring some of what we already do, some of what we've seen other districts do and really bring that to bear. So, I, I'm encouraged that not only will this help us house students and provide a traditional calendar for more families that want to see that, but that we can help provide the individualized instruction for all students. Yes.
Can you say, I don't, I have not been in a traditional school since I went to school myself.
Yeah.
But they, when I was in school, there was different math, the teachers split off the kids for the math and the reading and that. Do the traditional schools here do that at all? Like, so in third grade, there was-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
-you were at math level and you would go to your math teacher and then you would go to your reading teacher based on your level.
It depends, yeah, it depends on the school. It depends on the school. There is some of that, mostly among grade levels. So, so they do group them according to, so they'll, they'll do a pre and post-test, they'll do a pre-test.
Well, in ours, it's very fluid, you can change it for the year.
Right. And so then, depending on what skill they're working on, you're in this group or you're in that group. And it's very, it's, it's like Terry described, it's very focused on not a whole chapter or a whole unit, but on very specific skills. And they're looking at individual test items to say, okay, who gets these test items and who doesn't? No one got this test item? That's a bad test item. Okay, what we're seeing is, okay, people are breaking into groups and it's clear that this group needs some help with this test item. These guys are ready to move to something else. And they're doing some of that precision grouping.
Well, and some of the teachers are better at teaching some things than others.
Right. Right.
I had a thought with that as well. In their PLC meetings that they hold each week, they come together and talk about that. They bring their data and they say, okay, we just taught this concept or this standard. Here's the data for my class. How did your students do? Boy, your students seem to have mastered this at a higher level than my students. What did you do that will help me? Or do we need to restructure a little bit and send some kids here and there a little bit to help with some re-teaching? So a lot of that work that takes place, they do in the professional learning communities as well. Excellent question.
Any other questions along the way? Yes.
Another question, I just want to clarify. So then, you would be looking at some things before you decide, is you would look at a school. So you keep the three calendars, you look at a school, say, is this a right school for modified day schedule? And you're going to look at what class sizes are going to be in that school. If you'll have a room for enrichment activities, what ability needs to be utilized? So you would look at a school, kind of like you do now with your calendars and say, okay, this school's ready for this, this school's ready for that. And then you make a decision based on that. So, it is possible for the board to say, we're gonna cap these class sizes at thirty-four or at thirty-five. And then you only would select schools that would meet that requirement?
Part of what we would look at, I think, is running actual, so, let me just talk about the implementation timeline. It'll be a preview of what we'll look at in a couple of slides. This will first be implemented as a pilot in the sixteen, seventeen school year. The reason for that is so we can explore all these kinds of questions. We don't want to launch it without having carefully thought through, how are we gonna help students at each extreme of the spectrum of, of preparedness and, and achievement? How are we gonna work the logistics of transportation? How are we going to work with class size caps and make sure that we don't have classes of forty-five? We have not had class size caps in my memory because what happens is that sometimes you just have an anomaly of a particular grade that doesn't quite qualify for four teachers, but three teachers makes for large class sizes. So, the way we have offset that is with additional aides and paraprofessionals who can help kind of virtually reduce that class size because the ratio of adult to students is offset that way. But that's something that we can certainly consider. A school, if, if we looked at a school and said, okay, it'll only work for, we can set a class limit for this school and it will work. And so, we're going to implement it there. But then over time, as the population shifted, that might not always be feasible in every grade to have that absolute limit. And so, that's part of what we need to look at, I think, is to run some models on actual schools. Learn more from Alpine and say, okay, let's say we were implementing it in these four very different schools. Not what would the math be hypothetically, what's the perfectly balanced example? But if we were actually implementing this, what would it look like? What would it cost us? So that we run the model on actual schools that are in very different circumstances so that we're looking at, we don't want to jump into this and then have a worst-case scenario jump our way that we had not thought about at all and say, whoa, we are at forty-five. Boy, didn't see that coming. We wanna do our best to have thought that through and run the model so that we, does that answer your question?
Yeah. Is there not a way to do an ideal class size and a cap though? Like, 'cause you could have an ideal at thirty-five and a cap at thirty-eight. And so, that gives you a little leeway, like, to do it. But then the teachers aren't overwhelmed thinking at any time, I could end up with even more than that?
Hypothetically, yes. It just, it just has to do with, you can have a particular imbalance in any grade level. The only way to really put in a cap on a class size is to set aside a certain amount of money to offset it. And that's to say, we are not going to go with the staffing ratio. We will simply infuse some additional dollars to pay for extra teachers if we have to to offset the class size. But then you don't get the funding from the state to do that because it doesn't come out in the wash. If, if, if you don't balance by school, then you have to set aside some extra funds to, to, to pay for that. So, you could do that as a budget item. Does that answer your question? It's something we'll be looking at.
How are you going to fight off the people that are trying to permit in all of a sudden? So, now all of a sudden, their neighborhood schools are year-round. They see this great idea and so, we had this, we had this amount of students, but now seventy-five wanna permit in because they want that traditional scheduling.
We, we, the law gives us certain windows during which parents can apply for a permit and then we have a certain period of time where we make that decision. If our population grows, we have the right to revoke permits. We have not done that to my knowledge. But because of the, the protections in the law, we have certain timeframes during which we're able to make that decision and we've been able to mostly balance that out. We want people to have their choice if that's at all possible, but not at the expense of being able to provide reasonable class sizes.
How long would you be looking at doing this as a pilot before possibly implementing? Just one year is good?
It's, it's a great question. And we'll talk a little bit more about the schools. I know I'm running well over my time, but we have a couple of very different schools that we're looking at piloting it with. And then after that, depending on how that pilot goes, we could, I think, expand it rapidly because we have set two different schools that will teach us a lot about different sorts of issues. Yes, sir?
What's the, I may be business, but what's your primary impetus in modified program?
Excellent question. You can fit, on a year-round schedule, at the very max, you can fit thirty-three percent more students. With a more relaxed year-round schedule, you can fit twenty-five percent more students than regular traditional. With a modified extended day, you can fit about fifteen percent more students. So, we have a number of year-round schools that don't need thirty-three percent or twenty-five percent, but can't be traditional without that fifteen percent. And so, it expands the number of schools that can make traditional. So, it either helps some schools avoid having to go year-round or it allows students to come off of year-round more rapidly.
You're not sure exactly, it's a great idea, but we're not sure what that's going to do with the class sizes and what it sounds like.
It's going to increase it and decrease it. Sorry?
Sounds to me like that's what you're trying to figure out, is what that's going to do to the class sizes.
Right.
With your modeling and-
Right.
Trying to figure out if there's caps, if it's possible or not.
Right. If you switch to a modified extended day, you, you can fit fifteen percent more than a traditional calendar. That's attractive to us because we'd like to have fewer schools on year-round. In addition, you get seventy-five minutes with a smaller class where you're able to, to do more individualized instruction. That's attractive. But we-
Attractive to me, though, is the middle of the day.
Right.
When I have a student that is struggling.
Yep.
The majority of the day, he's sitting in his desk now staring at the board and dinking around causing problems because he cannot get any more attention.
And that's absolutely an issue. And I think it's probably the largest issue for us to grapple with is making sure that that, thirty-five is large enough, thirty-eight is large. Getting into the forties in elementary would be, getting into the forties in secondary is, is trouble. But getting into the forties in elementary would be something that we would very much like to avoid. So, that's why we want, that's why pilot, that's why a year from fall rather than the fall so that we can work on ways to avoid that and to, to manage that larger class size in the middle. So, really, there needs to be training on managing the larger class size and making the most of that and making the most of the smaller class sizes on year-round. I share those same concerns. Other questions? Okay. So, increased building efficiency over traditional, like we talked about. Enrichment programs that can be provided Fridays, we would, that would have to be modified for instructional hours. More hours and more pay for teachers and administrators. Alpine reports it's easier to recruit teachers to a modified extended day, more pay. Drop-off and pickup areas are less congested. Teachers in the building the same, at the same time, which allows for them to collaborate. When you're on year-round, you're always missing someone from your team and you're not able to work together to help students in the same way. And then feeder schools may need to adjust start and end times if this takes off. An elementary here and there, you can manage. If you have several in an area, then just because of busing, that may affect the secondary school. So, Bluffdale Elementary is under consideration as a pilot school. It's one of our largest geographic area schools, has a lot of buses. It's year-round and so, it would be going from year-round to traditional. Riverside is the opposite. It's traditional, but it's just kind of bumping up against possibly needing to make that move to year-round in the next few years and we could prevent that. Riverside is a Title I school and so, that would be a unique component there as well. But they don't have busing issues because they only have one or two special education buses that would be relatively unaffected. So, they're two very different schools, different geographic areas. And so, we're going to be learning more about the model, talking with those communities, getting feedback from those communities before we move forward.
How do they do it with kindergarten?
With kindergarten, you have early birds and later gators for the morning and for the afternoon.
So, the kindergarten teacher only has one set? They just have early birds have morning kindergarten and later gators have afternoon kindergarten? Or do they have a middle of two hours?
My understanding is it's staggered in the morning and staggered in the afternoons as well.
So, that busing would be a nightmare.
Right.
That's one word for it, yes.
So-
Although, sometimes, even, even currently, we have all those who need busing on an afternoon kindergarten schedule. So, you can manage things that way and say, you know-
Well, or could you, if you have more classrooms, make it so the kindergartens do have the, every, if you want an early bird, you start at eight. If you want a later gator, you end. You, you just have afternoon kindergarten.
These are exactly the things we'll be exploring over the next few months. That's exactly what we'll be looking at.
I heard a big question to have on site, is how do you manage that?
The kindergarten, one of the pilot schools we have, holds a kindergarten. So, that's something to look at as well.
Yeah, like Bluffdale, it has a huge busing area. Seems like the costs to do the busing could pay for another teacher.
Yes.
Could there be some schools that this would be off the board? So, for example, the immersion program, I'm looking at this and I have no idea how the current immersion model's going to work in an extended day. So, I know Alpine has immersion, so I'd be curious to see how that works because you've got two groups of kids. So, and unless you're gonna have a teacher share sixty kids, I mean, like, their, their class sizes have to be limited to keep the current model. So, I'd be curious, how do they do that?
If we wanna do the same thing, we've got some sites that set up for a Chinese immersion down in Alpine. Bluffdale is a Portuguese immersion, so they're gonna have to deal with that.
So, they're gonna be-
And Riverside is a Spanish immersion.
Have the parents visited the Alpine immersion schools that are going to do this pilot? Let's see what they think of it?
Yeah, we'll have parents on our team to come down and visit that. Talk to each of the schools for the weekend because Bluffdale already knew that it was going to be.
And I have to finish, but before you tell, I was on the building utilization committee and I just wanna say, like, there are things we presented on that committee that we discussed this and we were open to it. There's other things that we suggested that were higher ranking that haven't been considered or done yet either, but I'd like that to be reviewed again.
Anything else? This basically says we're going to be doing what Mike described, taking groups of people down to visit. It's not just going to be a few cabinet members visiting. It will be a lot of interaction with teachers and parents and administrators. We have the benefit of having this model very close by to look at and we can take whatever we want from it and we can make whatever modifications we need to make it fit our needs, so. Thanks for your time. We have Jason Skidmore now, who's our CTE director, who's gonna talk with us about some innovations in that area.
Right, right. Perfect. I can do that. Good evening. It is, it's very good to be with you. Make sure I can, see if I can push this to the right direction. Many of us, when we took classes in high school, it was probably vocational education at the time and that looks much different today. One of the things I've been asked to share this evening is some of the innovations that we are making and taking in the career and technical education and how we are trying to do a better job and be in a, more innovative in the way that we deliver instruction. It's interesting to note that in two thousand and eleven, out of a study that Pathways to Prosperity that came out of the Harvard Graduate School of Education, in that study, they found that teens who have good work experiences while they're in high school are much more likely to be more prosperous, set ambitious goals, as, as well as to be employed at a higher rate while they're going to pursuing a further degree, whether that be a one, two, or four more years in their education. Kind of with that idea in mind, here with the support of the Board of Education, with our district administration, we've been able to, to really leverage that and we are excited by the support that, that we have received. And with the new purchase that maybe some of you are aware of, this was the, formerly the, the Garden Lodge, which was just down the street at about two thousand West here on one hundred and twenty-six South. Since then, it's been a Concordia Preparatory School. And I believe this, early this summer, was when the finalization was, the sale was made final for, to pursue this as a career in technical education as well as a multi-use facility for the, for the district. What I wanted to share with you tonight was some of the innovations that we are, are making as we move forward to provide more career and technical education opportunities for students at advanced levels. I also wanted to be clear that the things that we're doing here at Riverton High School and all of our high schools are available to our students. It's one of the questions people ask, why do we need a center? Why do we need to, to pull students? We, we right now pull students to the Jordan Campus, which is located on, on Sala Community College's campus there where students can enroll in advanced programs. So, why, and why the need for another center? Well, our space is limited and the, the excitement that our students have for pursuing advanced or capstone or more exploratory, our programs are needed as well as those, as we try to meet some of the needs of our business and industry partners. If you're not familiar with, this is just one image that we have. I want you to, to take note because we're gonna talk about some of the innovations that will, that will take place here, beginning in the fifteen, sixteen school year. We anticipate opening the school with additional four new programs. Two of them that you'll see there are an introduction to cosmetology as well as in the future, providing some advanced welding. And I'll talk more about that at the end of the presentation. But what I wanted to really focus on were the innovations that were going to be taking place with these three areas of study. Agriculture, our family consumer sciences, which is our education area, as well as the health sciences screen that you, our programs that are available to our students. As we look at how to deliver education, how to deliver great experiences, we've really looked at partners and partnerships. In our agriculture, you saw on the previous slide that we, there's a beautiful greenhouse. Maybe I should ask, how many attend, were, have been inside the Garden Lodge? You're from this area, when it was the Garden Lodge? You know, unfortunate that it didn't work out, but very fortunate for us because I think of some of the things we're able to do. There is a beautiful greenhouse where we're able to provide some education to our students in, in the realms of greenhouse and ecosystems and how those work. One of the partnerships that we're most excited about is, is here our nutrition, here in the school district. If you're familiar with the term farm-to-school, does that ring a bell? As, as, as we, as a, as a district, focus on how do we work with our local farmers, producers to provide props or, or resources that can be used right in our school cafeteria programs, our lunch programs? With this partnership, we're going to be able to provide these experiences to our students as well as partner with our nutrition services to really leverage our resources to provide some quality experiences at a lower cost, to really be innovative in what we do that our students, that are interested in agriculture programs and working in, in greenhouses and ecosystems and really with the natural resources that we've been given to see how that works, to be able to see their goods grown, produced, and then be utilized in our, in our, in our local schools. That excites learning and excites really to see that process from beginning to end. Along those same lines in, in partnership and not listed here, but there will also be a culinary or a training kitchen that our, that our nutrition program uses to, to train new workers as they come in to, to the safety procedures, how to use equipment. And there'll be a facility onsite to do that, really professional development with our classified staff. We're also going to be able to open that up to our students who are interested in culinary and catering to programs and they'll be able to, to really access not only that same equipment, but they'll also be able to access careers, job opportunities that hopefully will give them a leg up in either a career choice or at least a, an opportunity to raise some money so they can go to school, that they can pay for their education because that is becoming more and more financially burden on our students and our families. The Landscape Management and Design Program, as we think about, and I'm gonna kinda go back to this, this slide here, what you see here is really a blank canvas. The students, you know, will have, be able to, to work in, in- The students, you know, will have, be able to, to work in, in landscape architecture and landscape management, to be able to take the, the, the flowers, the plants, trees, and other things that they either grow or, or manage, and to be able to beautify an area and to really see that. This is unique. Most, most landscape management programs that we've looked at across the, the nation really focus on, on coming and maybe working in somebody's yard, but we can do this here without the cost or worry of somebody's yard being torn up. We can tear up our own yard, we can beautify it, that they can learn about how ecosystems work, irrigation technologies, how to manage zero scape, how to look at architectural design, and what plants grow best, and, and with our partnerships that we'll be able to develop with our local nurseries, there's gonna be a, a world open to our students. And, and sometimes when we think in our minds, well, it's just a greenhouse, or we're gonna go out mow some lawns, and we have students that are, that wanna get their hands dirty, but, what I think we have to recognize is that we're opening a world to students who might be interested in, in bio-ag, in modified foods, in how to leverage the natural resources that, that are becoming scarce. And so, we're really looking at a group of students who now can really be innovative, take that experience that they're getting here and have a leg up as they move forward, so, I'm certainly excited about that. I wanted to point out with our, with the family consumer science area, with our teacher education program, this is a model for the state of Utah. It is the only program in the state of Utah that, that allows students to, to really get a leg up in their education, that wanna go into teaching. One of our innovations is really to grow our own educators. We talk about growing our own food, we need more teachers, and this is, we've been running this program at the Jordan campus for about six years. We are going to move it to the Riverton location, because we are finding that our local Kari Sue Hamilton School and some of our other schools are hiring our students as either paraprofessionals, parare educators, and they are, kind of grabbing onto our own students and really trying to be innovative in that, in that approach. What a great opportunity. And then finally, in our health sciences or our protective services area, our fire science and our, and our EMT program, we have been fortunate to partner with Unified Fire for the last three years, and what we have found, over those past three years, that twenty-six of our students who have been interested in protective services are now employed by Unified Fire. They are gaining the skills, they are gaining the, the college credit, they are gaining the opportunities in a real-world experience because of this partnership, and we hope to expand those innovations as we move forward and, as we, as we move into the, the next era of, of how we need to train our students for the, the jobs and the skills that they need for today. Questions that you have as we, about this facility?
So, are some of these new classes then, not all of these were offered at Jordan?
No, not of them, four of them are, will be brand-new to the, to Jordan School District. They've been currently available to students in neighboring school districts, but we are hoping and with this plan to, to provide those to our students here, local, that's, that's close, and they don't have to bus or travel distance to get them, so.
So, if they were going into medical things, they would still go over to Jordan?
Mm-hmm. So, they could still, they can still access programs at the Jordan Flight Technology Center, and this is just in addition to that, because of the, running out of space there. Good question. Thank you, we appreciate your support and we're excited for these innovations and we'll certainly move forward, so, thank you for letting us present tonight.
Thanks to our great staff members who have shared with us some of the exciting things that are happening in Jordan School District, and as you can see, some of these things are new things that we are implementing, some of them are things that we're considering, and we thought tonight would be a good time for, for you to ask questions and for us to get those ideas out there, so that we can get feedback to see if these are things that we are interested in doing and, and moving forward with. We just have a couple of minutes, five minutes. Are there any comments or concerns or questions that you might want to ask on these subjects or anything else? Well, if not-